Yeah, I have to.
Okay. Figure out how it's going.
Meeting, ladies and gentlemen, before our meeting begins tonight, we're going to have an invocation offered by Commissioners Twine, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Lord, we thank you for your grace and mercy today. We seek your wisdom and guidance as we transact the city's business. These blessings we ask in your name. Amen.
Amen.
The Pledge of Allegiance is the flag of the United States of America and true republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. Cresser, welcome back.
Thank you.
Would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Waddington?
Here.
Mr. Lockhart?
Here.
Ms. Twine?
Here.
Mr. Murray?
Here.
Ms. Lloyd?
Here.
Mr. Brady?
Here.
Mr. Poole?
Here.
I wanted to publicly thank Paige Doster for filling in while you were out. She did an excellent job taking care of all the business of the Commission, and our thanks go out to her, and a special welcome back to you.
Thank you. Amen to what you just said.
We have before, Commissioners, you have before you the minutes of our meeting of December 27, 2016. What is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Waddington.
I move that we accept the minutes of the December 27 meeting and dispense with a formal reading.
Second.
It's been a motion and second discussion. Let objection, the motion will be approved. Hearing no objection, the motion is approved. We turn now to audience participation. Anyone wishing to address the Commission, any of the regular agenda items, please step to the microphone, give us your name and address, and share with us your thoughts.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Happy New Year, everybody.
New Year.
Just a quick comment on item number one of the regular agenda, which would be the Paper District Marina. I know this went back to staff a little bit. It's appreciated that the Marina is going to be kept over 50% transient, which was the original purpose of that Marina, is to bring folks, you know, from out of the area to downtown to visit our shops and restaurants and our new hotel. So that's greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Schmager. Anyone else wishing to address the Commission? Commissioners, before we turn to our regular agenda items, I want to share with you some cookies. And there is a young lady in our community by the name of Alicia Hofer. She operates, D-Elish, I guess Delicious Desserts. And she can be found at Alicia@desserts, deliciousdesserts.com. I'm really goofing this up, Mrs. Cresser.
There's cards at the back of it.
Oh, there are cards at the back, and if you would get that, the pronunciation and the spelling into the minutes, I appreciate it. But I want to pass these along the table, and what I'd like to suggest, these are Boy in the Boot cookies, and there are plenty at the back for everyone else in the audience, and I'd like you to all enjoy one of those. She's a very fine young lady. But what we want to do with this meeting and going forward is, as we have opportunities to highlight some of the entrepreneurialship in our community, I'd like all of you to think about inviting different people, different companies, big and small, to come and share with us the good things they're doing here. There's a lot of buzz. I hear a lot of young people moving back into the area, starting businesses, people saying, "I'm going to take a chance and do some things." By the way, this is on a Sessos Centennial Celebration Plate, so a little bit of an antique there, as we pass that around. And so as you have ideas, share them with me or with Mrs. Cresser. We'd like to get those folks in to talk.
Keep that plate.
So, Mr. Lockhart, you have something?
These cookies are delicious. Delicious. This part of the program is brought to you by Delicious Cookies.
Keep talking, I took a bite while you were talking.
Really?
Excuse me. Commissioners, would someone care to make a motion to accept the communications in our packet?
So moved.
Second.
It's been a motion and second discussion. Let objection, the motion will be approved. Hearing no objection, the motion is approved. Consent agenda items, does anyone wish to suggest that any of those should be removed? Not then, would someone care to make a, I'm sorry, Mrs. Cresser, would you present the consent agenda, please?
Yes, there are two items on tonight's consent agenda. The first one is a contract with Lake Shore Health Partners Incorporated for transportation services with the Sandusky Transit System for the period of January 1, 2017 through December 31, 2017. The second item is authorization to sell unneeded vehicles, equipment, and other assets through public internet auction for calendar year 2017.
Commissioners, having heard the consent agenda, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Poole.
I move to accept the consent agenda and declaring that all ordinance and/or resolutions as drafted and presented to the City Commission under the consent agenda shall take effect in accordance with the section reflected in the ordinances and/or resolutions, whether it be in accordance with Section 13 or Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
It's been a motion and second discussion. Mrs. Cresser, would you poll the Commissioners on the motion, please?
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
And now on the ordinances and resolutions, please.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Those resolutions and, that resolution and ordinance are adopted. Mrs. Cresser, would you present item number one, please?
Item number one is a second reading of a resolution amending Section 1 of Resolution Number 034-13R passed on April 8, 2013, authorizing limited seasonal dockage at the Paper District Marina, and declaring that this resolution shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Twine.
I move for the adoption of this resolution under the second reading.
Second.
It's been a motion and second discussion. Mr. Harris.
To you, Commissioner President. Now that we have a full panel, the original motion as presented at the first reading was under Section 14. It didn't pass under Section 14 at that time because there was only four votes. However, you can make a motion during this meeting that the ordinance resolution be passed under Section 14.
I didn't catch whether the motion was made under Section 14 or not.
It was.
It was. Okay. So we're good, right?
We're 13 now, right?
No, we're 14.
Okay, there has been a motion and second. Mr. Harris just corrected that for the record. We good? Okay. Discussion.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Lockhart.
As previously stated, we voted on last time, I felt that increasing the number of permanent docks is not the way that we should go, and I think that we should give more time to, before we increase the permanent dockage of the Marina.
Further questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Poole.
I agree that the long-term outcome is to turn this into a fully transient Marina. The dock, our experience last year indicates that if we add some permanent docks this year, that it will not negatively impact our ability to fulfill our transient needs. It doesn't make sense to me to leave money on the table. The money that we get for these few additional seasonal docks, it was moved down from 31 to 27. We've added five instead of nine, will provide us additional income that can be used to promote the Marina and work toward increasing the transit usage. I would like to point out, at least from my perspective, the expectation I have of the folks who manage this Marina is that as we have given them additional resources, that we will see at the end of the season that they've spent them wisely, and we're looking to see some, an increase in the transient use of the Marina. Hopefully, we will see enough use, enough growth in transient use that we will begin to back off on the seasonal dockage. But I think this is a wise business decision to not leave this money on the table.
Further questions or comments? I will be abstaining from voting on this legislation for the same reasons that I articulated at the last meeting, namely my minority interest in a Marina down the shoreline a little way. Further questions or comments? If not, Mrs. Cresser, would you poll the Commissioners on the motion, please?
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
No.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
I'm sorry, abstain. Excuse me.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
And now on the resolution?
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
No.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Abstain.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
And now on the resolution?
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
No.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Abstain.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
That resolution is adopted. Item number two, please.
Item two is an ordinance authorizing and directing the City Manager to enter into a contract with Door and Associates Contracting Incorporated of Bay City, Michigan, for the demolition and asbestos abatement of the former Wisteria Farms project, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Lloyd.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under the suspension of the rules and in full accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
It's been a motion and second discussion.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Waddington.
This has been a long, for me, almost disgraceful to drive by there. It's a big-time health and safety issue, and I'm glad that these four permanent parcels are going to at least get raised and knocked down. It's unsightly. We've had, I've had two, maybe three residents that I've talked to over that way, and the one I walked in the backyard, and it's just, it wasn't right that it took this long, but I'm glad it's finally getting done, and I'm off working, getting this cleaned up.
Ms. Lloyd.
I would just ask Mr. Lasco to kind of walk us through, and kind of give us what our expectations should be.
Yes, to you, Mr. President, to Commissioner Lloyd. As Commissioner Waddington mentioned, this is a series of four parcels that makes up approximately two acres right in the middle of a fairly dense residential neighborhood. One of the things that I want to point out that's important for the public to understand is, we're proposing a two-phased approach at tackling the remediation and demolition of this site. So the current contract that's up for consideration would just be for the above-surface demolition and remediation. So what that means is, it would be raising the garages in the rear of the property. I would also be demolishing to ground level the piles of bricks that are also co-mingled with asbestos-containing materials in the middle of the site, and there's obviously a partially demolished building up along Campbell Street. So the ultimate goal under Phase 1 is to bring that to ground level, but unlike most of our demolitions, after Phase 1, it won't be a flat, level piece of grass. It will basically be a hard-surface piece of property that will be covered with concrete slabs and other pieces of brick material. Ultimately, what we look to do is come back to commission later. As most are aware, the city did receive $400,000 through the Brownsfield Program in working with Director Klein, and ultimately what we look to do is do additional below-surface investigation of groundwater and soil issues, then also develop a remedial action plan to ultimately clean the soil, and then bring the site back to a two-acre graded piece of grass. But again, I think it's important to denote sort of the differences with this first phase. We want to bring it to grade and get rid of the issues that have been resulting in nuisances in the neighborhoods, whether it's high grass and weeds, or folks getting in and out of the garages in the rear of the property. So that's sort of the distinction between the two phases.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Lasco. Thank you for your diligence. Further questions or comments?
Chairman.
Mr. Brady.
Mr. Lasco, I wonder if you would speak just briefly to the history of how this has taken place, the, what I find difficult sometimes to explain, and maybe you can explain it, I'm sure you can explain it better than I'm going to, but we take the seizure of private property very seriously, and that's a difficult thing to do in a situation like this. This was not public land. It was, it was private property. Why don't you just walk us through how we're doing this and why, the city has not necessarily drugged their feet on cleaning this mess up. We would have liked to have abated it two, three, four years ago, but that's, that's a legal quagmire that we find ourselves in, and perhaps you or perhaps Mr. Harris could shed some light on how that, how that process works.
Yes, to you, Mr. President, to Commissioner Brady. As mentioned, this is a private property that's still owned by the same owner that's owned it for several years. The city did step in several years ago, 2012, 2013, to do an emergency partial demolition of the front building on Campbell Street, and that also resulted in some of the debris piles left on that site. But what we do know is the private property owner obviously does not have the funds to remediate the site, and historically, the city hasn't had the funds at times to remediate the site. And then it's not just a matter of cleaning the above-surface issues with the property, but we know is, given the historical, commercial, and semi-industrial and production uses on that site, that there's groundwater and soil contamination on that site as well. So there's a lot of due diligence that goes into assessing the property. Normally, in this instance, we would, it would go through the tax foreclosure process. The city would acquire the site, and we can sort of move along pretty expeditiously. We're moving along with a lot of due diligence because we know, at least on a minimal scale, what's below surface. We do know that we ultimately have to address it, but in the short term, we know that we have to address the above-surface issues that are creating some of the immediate and direct hazards and nuisances. Ultimately, we'll look to do additional testing on the below-surface, and then ultimately go fundraise and seek additional assistance to feel comfortable to take on ownership of that site from a liability standpoint. That's one of the things we've been reluctant to do. We will demolish the above-surface, assess those to the real estate tax duplicate. It is going through tax foreclosure at the moment, and will likely be forfeited to the state of Ohio, but we likely wouldn't recommend to the City Commission taking ownership of that site until we do some additional below-surface understanding of the extent and location of some of the soil and groundwater issues that we've done already. So it's been a long, drawn-out process with a lot of investigation necessary.
Further questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Poole.
This money, this is being funded out of the EMS fund. What is our base level, our floor level amount that we plan to always carry in our EMS fund, since it was essentially for something other than this when we started it? What's that number?
I don't think we really had a base number on that. I think we worked with the chief and Matt to sort of do some five-year projections and estimate, estimates based on projected revenues and some of the expected remediations just to make sure that there was adequate funds left to cover some of the operating costs and the debt service primarily, because we still have some debt service that we're funding, fire equipment, fire trucks, and things like that on. So I don't know if we've had a target balance, but I think we've tried looking at it at a five-year sort of bird's-eye view, just to make sure that based on the funding and budgeted expenses, that we're not sort of going in the wrong direction, so.
And through the Commission President, to Commissioner Poole, when we were going through the legislative process to allow the demolition of dangerous properties as part of the uses for the EMS fund, at that time, Director Soloway, and working with Director Lasco and I, and Chief Degen, who's not here tonight, looked at the capacity to probably over that five-year period absorb, absorb about 1.5 million in demolition costs, and then once we got through that period, it looked as if there was an overage of approximately 70,000 a year going forward, based on covering the long-term needs. So I'd say that's probably the measure that Matt and I have been working, but on each project, we do check in with Hank to make sure that we're not pushing that fund to a dangerous level. It was also important that we did hire, or purchased the ladder truck last year, which was a large purchase, to make sure that we got major purchases for the fire department in before we started to move forward. And then I think with this demolition and the others coming in, we'll have exhausted just over 500,000, I believe.
555,000.
For what's planned currently, so we still feel we're pretty good where we're at with that initial 1.5 million dollar estimate, so.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Poole.
I think, you know, I understand these five-year estimates. Any number of things could happen in five years. I think I'd be, I'd be more comfortable if I had, if whoever these, he spoke of a target number and a discussion with Mr. Soloway to see if we're okay. Those things, to me, are tied to a number, and I appreciate over the, I would say the next couple of months, we come up with a, either an explanation of how that we feel comfortable with is arrived at, or an actual number that we can deal with, because between debt expense and any unforeseen emergencies that we need to use for that, I don't want to get caught having to wait two more years to catch up, because something came up. I'd like a, just a little more formal idea of what we're actually, how much money we're dealing with. It's like a sliding scale based on whatever project comes up. So, just my thoughts at this point.
Mr. Soloway, maybe perhaps as an additional, an initial step toward addressing Commissioner Poole's concerns, you could share with us the five-year capital budget for the EMS fund with the anticipated revenues and anticipated expenditures.
Yep, we could do that.
I don't think I've seen that in about a year's time, but maybe a little less than that, but you provided what I've asked for, but maybe you should just give to the whole Commission.
I think one of the things we had a hard time forecasting is we had some changes in the charges, the rates have increased, so, you know, those have increased. We've contracted with a local firm to help on delinquent collection, so we were anticipating some generous, modest to generous increases in those proceeds, so, again, they're projections, so we kind of wanted to see how, you know, have a full year of that in place, to see how those will really impact the next four years, but nothing's happened that I think has taken us off of the general plan of kind of getting these buildings down and use those funds to remediate things. But yeah, we can certainly do that and work with City Manager, Chief, and Matt to make sure we're all on the same page.
Okay, thank you.
Rob.
Further questions or comments with respect to this legislation? Mrs. Cresser, would you poll the Commissioners on the motion, please?
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance?
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance?
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance?
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance?
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance?
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance?
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance?
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance?
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
That ordinance is adopted. Item number five, please.
Item five is an ordinance approving the new fee schedule as recommended by the Cemetery Board for the Oakland Cemetery and Memorial Park Rules and Regulations, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Lloyd.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under the suspension of the rules and in full accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
It's been a motion and second discussion.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Poole.
Just a question in general about Cemetery Board. A cemetery, we had a presentation six months ago from some high school students, dealing with some things at the cemetery, some things that need to be addressed, bees and multiple things were addressed. Have we done anything with that? Since it costs money, and this is about money, I'm tying it together. Did we get rid of the bees?
To you, Mr. Chairman. To Commissioner Poole. So, half of the bees are gone. We had two queen bees leave the nest, and we had a beekeeper come in, smoked them, corralled them, put them in their cage or whatever they do, and they're gone. So since then, we're gonna, now that they're dormant, we're gonna go up and, for lack of a better term, we're gonna try to seal them in so that they'll stop in their hive where they're at. We feel that we have enough out now that we can do that.
them, put them in their cage or whatever they do, and they're gone. So since then, we're gonna, now that they're dormant, we're gonna go up and, for lack of a better term, we're gonna try to seal them in so that they'll stop in their hive where they're at. We feel that we have enough out now that we can do that. Before, we weren't sure of the number, but it could have been anywhere from 10,000 to 100,000 bees in there, depending on who you asked and what expert we went to. And then on the inside, we're going to try to put some special paint on the inside so it won't crack anymore if they do continue to make honey while they're in there. As far as the gate goes, we have some estimates on the gate, and we're working to see if we're gonna do that in-house, if we're gonna have to go to a contractor if someone fixes it. I don't recall the other issues, but there was big ones.
Okay, as long as we're getting, taking care of them. There are, all the, the whole list is on, ultimately, we're gonna handle the things that they talked about?
I would assume that we are aware of all of the things that they had talked about, and so that, yes, we're making a plan to
Okay.
to make sure that they're all completed.
Mr. Link, just one question. Given the bee shortage, we're not killing the bees, are we? We're just
No, the bees have moved. I don't plan on killing any bees, but we're gonna try to seal it up so that they can't get back in.
Okay, got it.
That's the case.
Understood. Thank you. Further questions or comments? Cresser, would you poll the commissioners on the motion, please?
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
And now the ordinance?
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
That ordinance is adopted, and that completes our rather short list of regular business items. We turn the meeting now over to Mr. Whoopsir for his city manager's report.
Thank you, Commissioner President, commission staff and audience. We'll start with the donations. Donation of $15.28 in pennies was donated once again to the K-9 Fund from Bryson Whoopsir. I'd ask for a motion to accept that donation.
So move.
Then a motion, second discussion. Lot of objection, motion be approved. Hearing no objection, the motion is approved with our thanks to that young man.
Thank you. Also, construction equipment donated a lift for the removal of Christmas decorations and lights. I'd ask for a motion to approve that donation.
So move. Second.
Then a motion of second discussion. Lot of objection, the motion is approved. Hearing no objection, the motion is approved with our thanks.
Great, thank you. Moving on to city manager administration, we're planning on issuing a request for proposals for the redesign of the website that was budgeted for. Stuart is available if you guys have any questions, but we want to let you know that proposal will be out and competitively put out there for firms to bid on. Also, the police department, Lieutenant Scott Dahlgren begins a 10-week leadership training with the FBI National Academy in Quantico, Virginia on January 9th. This is an elite leadership academy recognized throughout the world. We wish him well in this new and exciting opportunity. I know that Chief Orzak had the chance to participate in this leadership before he became the chief, and has said it was one of the things that made him feel most ready to take his next step. And whenever he has an officer, or a police officer that gets accepted to it, it's really important and exciting. The fire department, we have a few retirements. Firefighters Todd Shane and Glenn Zatalla, both recently retired with 25 years of service. We wish them the best of luck and thank them for their years. The finance department has scheduled the next finance committee meeting on Friday, February 24th, 2017, at 7:45 a.m. Again, that's the 24th at 7:45 a.m. in this commission chambers. The public works department congratulate Orrin McMonigal for obtaining his Class IV Water Operator's License from the state, which is the highest achievement possible in this field. Orrin is one of only 140 in the entire state. The city now has a Class IV operator at both treatment facilities, including the sewer plant as well. The emergency intake update, the goal of this project is to make sure the intake is operational by the time phrasal ice may occur over the main intake. As of January 4th, the emergency intake was tested and considered operational and ready for the winter freeze. The contractor is still working to install the chemical feed line. Also, a sidewalk program update, we know we've had a lot of questions recently regarding the trees, et cetera, that might be lost as part of this program. The contractor is planning to remobilize in January 23rd. Engineering and public works are working with the city's arborist to review the 102 remaining trees on the list that are heaving sidewalks to develop a plan, hopefully for each one, and we want to use a scalpel to the extent possible, as opposed to the hatchet, and see how many trees can be saved as we look to maintain and improve our sidewalks, which is the goal of the program. Community development, the city is planning on applying as a partner organization with the Nehemiah Center. We'd actually be supporting Nehemiah Center's application for a Build It With Kaboom grant. Kaboom is a national nonprofit based in Atlanta that will come in and construct, sort of done in a day or done in a few day, park-type setting projects are very exciting. I was part of a few in Cleveland. If awarded the grant, Kaboom would send a project manager to work with the Nehemiah Center and the neighborhood residents over several weeks to imagine and plan an ideal play space. This planning would culminate with a six-hour community day where the play structure is assembled and site enhancements are done. Due to the specialization of play equipment and site enhancements, the total dollar value of the project grant can vary. As I said, this is actual grant request, but this is something that came out, if you remember, our neighborhood meeting at Nehemiah Center. They talked about a need to update what is an aging playground facility, and I want to give a shout out to Talon Floor and Angie and their department for really working with Nehemiah to try to bring that dream to a reality. So we'll keep our fingers crossed. On January 6th of 2017, the city published the annual notice in the Sandusky Register outlining revisions to solid waste disposal requirements. Any properties found to have trash, debris, garbage, and other refuse in the public right-of-way or boulevard outside of the permitted times shall be declared a nuisance, and the city may cause said refuse to be immediately removed without further notice. Bless you.
Thank you.
If the city removes the nuisance, the cost of doing so, along with a $100 administrative fee, shall be assessed to the property owner. As a reminder, trash, debris, garbage, and other refuse recyclables may be placed upon a curb for curbside collection no earlier than 6:00 p.m. on the evening prior to the scheduled collection of said materials, and any such materials or containers which remain after said collection shall be removed from the said curb no later than 8:00 p.m. on the date of said collection. I apologize for reading that, but we want to make sure that everyone is aware as possible of the fact that we're moving a lot more aggressively, both for debris and trash, as well as also tall grass abatement in the neighborhoods. The Sandusky Neighborhood Initiative saved the date for February 18th. There'll be a public presentation of all six neighborhood plans on Saturday, February 18th. As the date nears, times for each specific neighborhood presentation will be set. The goal of that plan is that you could come for the slot dedicated specifically to any one neighborhood or participate in the promotion of all six neighborhood plans. The planning commission meeting is scheduled for January 25th at 4:30 p.m. in the first floor conference room. Again, that's January 25th at 4:30 p.m. Items for discussion include recreational vehicle parking and zoning regulations regarding chickens. Also, the Board of Zoning Appeals meeting is scheduled for January 19th at 4:30 p.m. in the first floor conference room. Again, that's January 19th at 4:30 p.m. in the first floor conference room. The landmark commission meeting is scheduled for January 25th, following planning commission in the first floor conference room. In addition to public services and recreation, Penny Randleman has retired from the grounds maintenance division of property maintenance. After 25 years of service, we wish her well and thank you for her service. Also, we've posted a position in the grounds maintenance department to fill her position. And then just an update, we know we've had a lot of questions on leaf season. We ran into some struggles based on a very warm fall, so the leaves stayed longer, and then a quick arriving winter. But I know Brad's been working closely with Dave Borsak and Streets, and we want to let people know that we continue to pick up leaves, and as the weather permits, we'll pick up all zones as long as the weather is cooperating. Please see the city website or the public services Facebook page for details and for questions. Don't hesitate to call 419-627-5884. Again, that's 419-627-5884. That concludes the remarks for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Whoopsir. Commissioners, questions or comments? If not, maybe we'll take a time to make it. But for the time being, why don't we turn to old business?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Waddington?
I met with Mr. Link this past week, and amongst the things that we discussed is the Lions Park. About five years ago, Commissioner Brady was on with me, I believe, 2011, and we had Pat Schenical, county commissioner, bring a bobcat out. In about five hours, we got, what, half the large stones, debris out. He was really good with that, and I discussed that with Brad. That's been questioned a lot by a lot of residents, and I'm thinking maybe like March or April, we can get it, have staff go in there. I've talked to some of you commissioners I know, talked to the mayor, talked to Mr. Brady, I think Mr. Poole today I mentioned too, that I would like to get in and get the rest of that cleaned up. We got sidewalk, street stuff in there and get that out. The second part would be maybe possibly get with coastal management downtown and just say, like I had mentioned to you, Brad, how far can we go in the water and do the cleanup and then get that behind us? And then the part B or the second part, it's, when we did this rebuild of Lions Park, the intention was never to compete with Cedar Point. It's a natural beach, so I'm thinking if we do run in to look into the erosion problem with the professionals, certainly not me. Do we need to maybe put armor stone down to the beaches around 900 feet long, maybe on the eastern end, 600 feet in, and then it's got a swell on the western end that I think that we might be able to get by with that, keep a 300-foot or 100-yard area of natural beach. You could walk down, because we have a lot of people that kayak out there and that windsurfing and canoeing and stuff, so it gets used a lot. But I just think it's to the point now where we gotta do something as far as cleaning that up, so. And I'll be looking for volunteers to help out. Mr. Brady, maybe you could throw something in on that? You helped out that day.
That was, I think that was a kind of a test of what you could accomplish in an afternoon with, probably had a dozen people, so I know Mr. Schwanger was there and several other concerned citizens, and we had one piece of equipment.
Right.
Imagine what we can do with four or five pieces of equipment back or something like that. I do think that we need, I agree with Mr. Wadding, I do think we need some input from a professional on what can we put on that beach that we won't lose at the very next northeaster. We don't want to throw good money after bad, so the cleanup is certainly, certainly something that we can do with blood, sweat, and our tears, but let's find out from the experts what we can do and how efficiently we can do that monetarily, and let's see if we can preserve something for the, you know, for the next generation.
Mr. Chairman, if I can finish up real quick, the park looks fabulous. I'm happy we're gonna have some new equipment. We're gonna try to keep that all boxed in an area over by the splash pad to keep, if you have a family of three and you got three kids and somebody's running by the parking lot, and you got another kid at the splash pad and somebody's playing basketball, it's hard to keep track of everything. So I like what Mr. Link did. He's got it kind of lined up on a row from the basketball courts, restroom area, splash pad, the big rocks, and we're gonna have some swing sets in that over there. And that keeps the pavilion, both of them, right where they're at without knocking them down or, you know, putting money in there, so. But it sits on slightly. I went out last week and walked down there, and it's, we got sidewalks, big pieces of farm, you know, streets, and I don't know why we dumped it in there. I wasn't around when that happened, so.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Waddington. And Mr. Klein, I hope you can follow up on that with some, either reach out to ODNR or some just paper napkin numbers at this point in time to give the commission some idea of the cost that we're talking about. I don't have the foggiest idea as to what that would cost. I don't think any of us over here do. Thank you. Further items of old business? Any items of new business? If you're looking at something to add there.
No, no, just kind of
Mr. Lockhart?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move the commission to engage the community a little bit more in this new year. I mean, in addition to social media and the cable network, I'd like to see the commission hold meetings out in the public, maybe at least a couple times. I know we can't quite move around quite a bit because the public has to rely on where we will be, but perhaps we could do a commission meeting at the high school or something along those lines, maybe once or twice to engage the public so that we can get greater involvement and feedback from the public. What say you?
I have tried. I could not move that 800-pound gorilla because of the equipment concerns and the number of other issues. Two years ago, I indicated, three years ago, I indicated a desire to take the commission meetings on the road. I wanted to do one of the parks, one at mostly our own facilities, sewer treatment plant, the water treatment plant, one with the library perhaps, and just take it on the road, but the equipment challenges were too much, and I was ultimately persuaded it was not a good idea. But have at it, man, because if you can make the change, I'm all for it, but I couldn't push it through the last time.
Well, we've got a brilliant IT department here, so I'm sure that he and I and some of the other commissioners can kind of work through the logistics of that, but, you know, I think it would be a great idea, as you do, to get out into the public and have them get more involved in what we do here for them.
I tried, but my head is still sore from hanging on the wall, so I gave up on that one.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Waddington?
That's why we got the coffee meetings once a month, and then we start the office hours in the evening. I believe we got one next week, correct?
Yeah, we have one this Wednesday.
So engage there and maybe move them around a little bit, but I know this would be really expensive to try to move.
Yeah, it was a lot of additional labor hours, too.
Right, right.
Eventually, I was persuaded it just wasn't a good idea, so. But I'm open to the discussion again.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Brady?
I would certainly support many of those locations that you mentioned, except perhaps for the sewer plant.
You know, what I wanted to do at the time was have an opportunity to showcase some of the things that we do down there, because we spend a lot of money, we have a lot of fine people, a lot of expensive equipment, we do good work. But one of the other issues we ran into was ADA compliance. These are older facilities, and we couldn't get folks in and out, and so that was part of the problem, too, so.
And I think the real stumbling block was, was it not broadcasting?
It was, that was a big part of it, too, yes. It was enough that I just said, uncle.
I'm not blaming our IT guy.
No, no, it was just
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Poole?
All those logistical stumbling blocks aside, I think the primary purpose of this is to engage the public, and sometimes this is like building sidewalks. You put sidewalks where people walk, and when it's time for us to move this out into the community, I think the community will let us know. There'll be a demand for us to move this meeting elsewhere. Just my thoughts on it, which is why I think it didn't go. I think it's a good idea. I'd be happy to meet any place anyone would like to meet, but in terms of, the public has adequate opportunity to engage us here if they choose to, and if they are, if we're doing something that keeps them from coming, I think they'd let us know.
Other items of old or new business?
Hi, Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Brady?
On our new business, I think we should, I think we should lobby the fact that both you and Commissioner Twine are going to be having office hours Wednesday evening.
Six o'clock.
At six o'clock.
We'll be here and we'll meet with people one-on-one, both in this room and in the clerk's office, the anteroom to the clerk's office if need be, so.
Thank you. Thank you for doing that.
Thank you for doing it. And I would like to thank the Hotel Kilborn for a lovely fireworks display on New Year's Eve that just was enjoyed by people from all over the community. Did not have to be anywhere near the water to see it. A lot of folks from all over town enjoyed it, so thank you for starting a great tradition. I hope it keeps up.
Absolutely, and I want to thank everyone that was involved with Crimis Construction, Shepherd Construction jumped in on it, and Steve Ernst did a fantastic job, and he was wonderful to work with. So we're excited, and we're hoping to expand each year, make it a bigger celebration for the city.
Other items of old or new business?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Waddington?
I thought about this over the weekend. I've enjoyed this year more than, I was on eight years before, sat out for, kind of quarterbacked, reading articles in the paper once while watching meetings, but I can truly say that we've got a good staff here and the commission's working together as far as, I can see, a lot of good things are happening, and it's fun when you got a little money in your pocket, because the last two, three years when I was on, like in 2010, 2011, or 2009, that's just, and you were a little bit of that, Mr. Murray, you know, when you left. It was tough. So it's encouraging now to be able to do some good things.
We came, we came back to it. You know, Commissioner Twine and Brady and I and Mr. Poole all faced some really dark hours three years ago and the cuts that we had to make at the time, so it's a whole lot different today than it was three years ago, that's for sure. Commissioners, we have an issue, I've shared with all of you, we have for almost two years now been undertaking a review of our boards and commissions. Some haven't met in years, some meet only as needed and they get kind of stale, and so the question was whether some of it should be eliminated or whether some that could be consolidated because they deal with similar subject matters and they would have a reason to meet on a more regular basis. So we've gone through an extensive process with Mr. Harris, Mr. Cresser before that, Mr. Isman was involved, Mr. Haverger was involved, and at this point, Commissioner Twine and I, who have been working on this issue sporadically over the last couple of years, I have settled on a set of recommendations that we have given to Mr. Harris and Mrs. Cresser, and Mr. Harris is going to put all that in the form of draft legislation that will get out to you by email, so you can take a look at that. It's not something we intended to just put on the agenda, but we want to put that out for consideration and feedback. But in the meantime, there are a number of positions that would expire before we could get to that legislation, and so Mrs. Cresser has prepared for us a memorandum that addresses the positions that either have already expired or would expire through our first meeting in February, February 14, with the request that we go ahead and appoint these folks as a group through that date, through February 14, 2017, to the same positions that they have. And I'm not sure that we all believe that that is necessary, but I would like to take that step and would request a motion to that effect.
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Twine.
I'd like to make a motion to accept a 30-day extension through Tuesday, February 14, for temporary reappointment of the members of the boards and commissions asked identified on the memo. Second.
Minor motion, second, discussion.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman.
Poole.
Yeah, as I told you before, no, I don't think we need to make these appointments, and I just need to check on something. What happens after you make appointments? What occurs?
We would, go ahead, Ms. Cresser.
From staff, what is, what happened?
So the necessity is that some of these boards and commissions may not be able to function for the next 30 days unless the appointments are made, so that's why we wanted to do them through the time that the legislation was introduced. Does that answer your question?
No, because I went through each one of them and I think all of them will function fine. Some of them don't even meet, so it doesn't matter whether we do it or not. I'm more concerned, do you notify them if they've been reappointed?
Not yet.
I mean, will you, will you do that if we reappoint them?
Yes, I normally do that.
Okay.
And I've notified all of the staff members that clerk the boards or attend the meetings so that they are aware of what the commission is proposing to do between now and then.
This is the point that I made to the, to Mr. Murray. This creates make-work for you, for folks who we do not even know if the committees that we're appointing them to are going to exist, if they're going to be reappointed, and it's not necessary to do it. And I don't mind if we do, that's fine, but I just recognize that it's about time. We've been messing with this for over a year and a half, and it's, it's time we just, just did things correctly. I find this troublesome, the fact that I'm a month from redoing all of these committees and have no idea what I'm voting, what it's going to be. It's nice that you've changed your mind and, and re-answered me, sent me another answer that said you're going to share with us what the changes are. Personally, I think something of this magnitude, we should be, especially with 28 committees or something like that that we have, that we would, if we're going to redo them, we'd have a work session, discuss what's the pros and cons before we're looking at legislation to vote on after a short notification. So just my thoughts on, on the whole process.
First, Mr. Poole, I'm happy to, this is not a, this is not a task I want to undertake. It was, I, Commissioner Twine and I undertook it because the ball had been dropped several times prior to that, and so it was just one of these things that had to be, it was housekeeping in a lot, in a lot of ways, it had to be taken care of, but I am happy to talk about the process. We have been working on this issue through a number of different positions in the office of the law director for a period of time now, and this is where it came out and when it came out, so, but like I said, I didn't want to just throw it on the agenda and say, "Okay, well, up or down, or amend, or whatever." We'll send it out by email, you can take a look at it, and I'm happy to consider everyone's feedback in terms of what process we might want to follow after that.
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Twine.
This, this matter of reappointing for 30 days, that just kind of gets us through. I can understand Commissioner Poole's perspective that he doesn't think this is necessary. I can understand that, but we're just trying to cover our bases as we're proceeding forward. We'll get the information to the commissioners, entertain any questions or concerns that they have, and go from there.
There's a motion and a second. Cresser, would you pull the commissioners on the motion, please?
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Yeah, that motion passes. Any other items of old or new business, commissioners?
Chairman.
Mr. Brady.
I'd like, I think we should acknowledge the fact that we're coming up on a very important day, and not just our city's history, but our nation's history, and that's Martin Luther King Day, which, which happens next week, and Mr. Waddington and I met with some fine folks from, I believe, the Second Baptist Church, Mr. Waddington.
At Evanese, yeah.
Celebration this year is going to start at their church with, I think, a proclamation read by the mayor, that'd be correct, on Friday?
On Saturday morning.
Saturday, okay.
So gathering at 6:30 on Friday.
Okay.
At Evanese, and then on Saturday morning, there is a car parade that goes from Second Baptist to Evanese.
Motorcade.
9:45.
Motorcade for the 80th birthday of Martin Luther King.
Yes, thank you.
I just wanted to get that out in the, out in the public and a little encouragement to attend that.
Thank you, Mr. Brady. Any other items of old or new business? Will we turn now to audience participation? Anyone wishing to address the commission on any business related to the city? Yes?
Do you need the public hearing set for February 13?
I apologize, thank you. We do need to set, Commissioners, I would request that we set a public hearing. Do I set this one or we set this by vote? I never get these straight.
Vote.
Vote, okay. I'd like to request that we set a public hearing for February 13 to discuss the fiscal year 2017 to 18 community development block grant funds. So move.
Second.
Minor motion and second, discussion? Without objection, the motion will be approved. Hearing no objection, the motion is approved. Thank you for the reminder, Mr. Cresser. Now, anyone wishing to address the commission, please?
Mr. Mayor, Wonger 362 Sheffield Way. Tonight's discussion on Lyons Park, the shoreline, there's two issues. Number one, the condition of the shoreline, and also the submerged break wall that's out in front of Lyons Park, which is no longer submerged with the low water level. I'm receiving reports of boaters hitting that. There's also a lot of folks that go down and out canoeing, kayaking, windsurfing, they're hitting it, so there's a great opportunity here as we're meeting with the expertise from ODNR to see if there's not some way to either take that break wall out completely, that's number one, or a better idea, number two, is to rebuild that as part of the protection for the shoreline. I understand the armor stone thought, but again, let's try to look at every option available to try to protect that shoreline well into the future. As a matter of fact, Mr. Crimis, who is the, the company that dumped the sidewalk material there to begin with many, many years ago, apparently he kind of, and I don't know if anybody here was there at the time or not, but he kind of warned the city that if that was taken out and nothing put back in its place to protect the shoreline, that what's happening today was going to happen, so it's not rocket science. I mean, you take something away, you still got, you know, waves battering from the northwest, north, northeast, it's going to happen, and something needs to be done pretty quick because we've already lost probably by my estimates, and I'm not an expert, but at least six feet of shoreline. You've got where it was sloped all the way down to the water's edge, now you've got about a five-foot drop-off down at the east end, so something needs to be done soon. Again, we advocate, you've all seen the pictures, if you all got my emails, you've all got the pictures. Last year, two years ago, I was able to walk all the way out on that break wall, all the way out. So we already have, again, we already have the makings of protection, which is going to be a significant cost reduction if we rebuild that break wall. Now, on the agenda tonight with the Paper District Marina, we're seeing where all the money coming back in is going to the recreation department. Let me remind you that every year, Mr. Murray, you're familiar with this, you have a marina that you guys send X amount of dollars to the state, we get half that money back. We have several marinas in the city of Sandusky. So let's take that half the money that we get back from all these marinas and put it into a fund that would go towards public waterfront areas such as Lyons Park. The other issue is, great job on the consent agenda. I live out in Mirrorwood Village, which is primarily a retirement facility. I'm not retirement age yet, I'm still working, but what I hear from those folks out there, I meet about every, every Tuesday morning at 10 o'clock with what they call a coffee klatch, and their complaint was that the consent agenda A, B, C, and D, they didn't know what you were talking about with this new system. Right on, kudos, it's going to work, I like it. Westiria?
Had a few bugs, we've worked, had a few bugs, we're still working them out.
Right, right, good job, good job.
It's a, it's a work.
Hey, I can't stand here and complain all the time, I got to give you credit where credit's due, right? On Westiria Farms and GNC Foundry, when do we hold the property owners responsible? Do we have liens on both those properties? From what I understand, Westiria Farms, lady took it over, had a company come in, they stripped everything out of it that was valuable, and then we've got what's left and we're, we're now cleaning it up with EMS funds.
Different situations. Mr. Lasco indicated earlier that we are then leaning the property for what we expend to abate the nuisance.
Okay.
So we went, we did that once before, and we're doing that again now, and as it goes through tax foreclosure, that's probably moot because there isn't going to be anything else valued a lien, but, and then GNC is a different animal. As I recall, that went back to the state through that process, it was stripped of all liens in the property we now own, and so we are improving our own property.
Okay, but we've gone through every mechanism possible to get money from a different source than using EMS funds, which was primarily meant for fire equipment, and now we're borrowing money to buy fire engines instead of paying cash. So, you know, I mean, you can't, you can't, you can't squeeze blood out of a tournup. You've heard that phrase before, right? So primarily, from what I understand from Mr. Lasco, is that Westiria Farms is still owned by the, the property owner, but we're going in to clean it up. We put a lien on that property, if we, if there's no money to get, how do you get it?
It's the problem that the state legislature leaves us with. We in many other older cities have these properties that have to be dealt with for the safety and health of our own community, and we are in many instances left to fend for ourselves to figure out how to do it. There have been some monies that have provided by the state and federal government, we've had some pretty creative staff members, Mr. Klein in particular, Ms. Waddington as well, Mr. Lasco, the three of them really lead that triumvirate, and they've gone out and found opportunities, to the best of my knowledge, more than we've ever been able to locate before, to remediate these problems, but there are still going to be dollars that we need to spend locally in order to be able to revive our economy, revive our, our neighborhoods, and provide for business development opportunities so we've got relatively cleaner properties available. So I wish, frankly, I wish there was a green space tax. Countries in Europe have exactly that. You want to chew up a piece of green land, you got to pay a tax. That tax goes to deal with old buildings that have been abandoned in lieu of the green space, but we don't do that in this country.
Okay, well, and again, I don't want you to think when I walk away from this podium that I'm saying at all that these properties shouldn't be cleaned up. You know, you know, neighborhood, the neighborhood people are probably celebrating, which is great, but it all comes down to how are we funding to get it, you know, to get it remediated? That, that's the problem. And how do you, how do you hold them responsible for their, their share of, you know, the process? The last, the last thing I have is, on the topic of RFPs, and I received an email from Justin today, and I really, I really appreciate his explanation, but you know, it just seems like the research that I've done on the city's website is that RFPs coming to the city, the city commission is like a hit and miss thing. One, one time you do, next time you don't. And with the RFP for the Justice Center or the Police Department Municipal Court, it just seemed like there was a real brief comment made in Mr. Whoopsers' manager's report a couple of weeks ago, and that was it. I mean, nobody, there was no discussion here, there was no, no vote, so I don't know, I guess it's supposed to be set up as a hit and miss. I don't know.
As Mr. Harris explained in his email, we follow the law and sometimes we go above and beyond that, but the law sometimes requires it and sometimes it does not.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Poole.
With regard to RFPs and the, whether we follow the law, we do follow the law, whether or not we go above and beyond, we seem to be entering, we're entering into a period of time here where we're being questioned more and more about whether or not we're being transparent. So rather than taking the position that what we've done is legal, would suggest we give consideration to, is it necessary? What, what, what is the reason that we would not, especially on a project as large as the Moving City Hall, which is going to be 12 million, yeah, all in all, close to $20 million, not come to commission to talk about the RFP ahead of time? It doesn't make sense to me that we would sacrifice our, our credibility with the community on things that they don't understand, because I, quite frankly, I expected that we would, I realized it was mentioned we are going to put out an RFP. I took it to be that we will see that coming. I'm, I'm of the normal practice that RFPs, I mean, at least anything of any significance, comes here for discussion. The concept where it's mentioned in the manager's report and not put on the agenda, simply the only benefit that I see to us is that it bypasses public conversation at the beginning of the meeting because it's not on the agenda. And I see, and not that that's the reason it's there, but I don't see any advantage one way or another to us, to it not being put on the agenda, open for discussion and comment. I would want comment on any major project that we're doing from the public on the front end anyway.
Well, as I understood, Mr. Harris's email, and perhaps he can respond here in a moment, the, the issue is that sometimes when we are going out for specific bids, we are required to adopt a resolution to authorize the staff to begin that process. There are other instances where we're just looking for ideas. The RFP in that instance is, does not have the same binding legal significance as when bids are put out for specification, the low bidder has to be awarded the bid, otherwise there are legal liabilities. When Mr. Whoopsers put out the RFP, he wasn't required to tell us he was going to ask folks for ideas. He told us some months ago that he was going to come back to the commission at some point with recommendations regarding the site for the, for the Justice Center, the municipal court, and the, and the police department, but he told us anyways that he was going to take this next step, so I, Mr. Harris, is there anything you want to add to that? Because my own feeling on this subject is that we are any more transparent about this process, the chief would cite us for indecent exposure.
Talk through you, Commissioner President. I think, I think you hit it on the head. I think, I think that in general, I think the public needs to understand the difference between competitive bidding, which you hinted on, regarding construction projects, and requests for proposals. That's more of like a, like a theory and ideal, because just from a conceptual standpoint, if the goal is to move the Justice Center to a location and you were to try to bring that process to commission without any, like, game plan or strategy, you have seven commissioners saying, "I think this Justice Center should go over here, I think the Justice Center goes over there." What we do is we streamline it behind the scenes. The public still has the confidence in you as the city commission that if we came to you with an idea based on the response that we got from the request for proposal that we think Justice Center should go there, you guys still have the ultimate vote. Even before my time, I've only been here since May 2nd, but if you go back, there's probably hundreds and hundreds of requests for proposals that are done behind the scenes for, for something as simple as, you know, maybe even uniforms. We didn't, we brought, sent us to you, but there was a request for proposal. We, the way the law's set up is that we don't, we, instead of having 20 agenda items, we would have like 50 agenda items for you guys to give us the green light, to go out and search for people to provide uniforms, for instance. Unfortunately, I mean, it's for some who, who are against this system, that's just how it's set up, but there are safeguards in place with you folks as the commission.
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Brady.
To be, to be clear, what we're talking about here is, is a request for proposal, and, and to not ask for that, I think is to be less transparent. What we're doing, it, I think that sends a signal, or should send a signal, that we have not, and staff has not, and this commission has not got a, a, a site selected and, and a deal cooked up. We're, we've gone out into the public with some very specific requirements, five, six, seven of them, site control being one, location perhaps being another, but we're just, as Mr. Harris has said, we're asking for ideas. We're asking for, what do you think is an appropriate site? Do you have control of that site? And can we, you know, can we consider you as, as an appropriate site for this? I think, I think to not do it is, is something less than transparent.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Poole.
I just, I'm just trying to clarify what Mr. Brady said, to not, to not do what?
To, to not ask for a request for a proposal.
Okay, I, I totally agree with that, but that, that isn't the point. I mean, you, we, Mr. Harris has recited again the, the law about what is allowed to do. That's really not the issue here. We are putting up, we're going to spend 10 to 12 million dollars of taxpayer money on a new police station. There has been a, I, I think there's an RFP out, that's what this started by, right? Okay. I don't have a clue what's in the RFP because we haven't been notified. I don't know what's in there. So it seems to me that, that the proper thing for us to do, if we're representing the public property, and if I don't know, then the public doesn't. I don't even know what you're looking for, and that's what we're talking about in terms of the concept where, as I read this here, what we're, what, the, the discussion is over what RFP should we be told about, and it's a judgment call. I think for me, this particular project, because of its size and how much it costs, it's a no-brainer. It's not the staff's fault that they didn't tell us because we haven't given them any instructions as a commission, so I totally understand, the staff's not at fault here. We have a difference on commission about how we are to represent and how much output and when we're going to bring the public in, in on whatever projects are going on. I happen to feel in this particular case, it's a $10 million project, you're going out and going to decide where you, we put City Hall, and I don't even know what the criteria is by which you're deciding to make the decision. I'm not sure I've represented the public very well, and that's just, we're going to have to disagree as individuals.
Well, Mr. Poole, in all of this, it will be for this commission to decide where the police department and the municipal court go. We will receive at some point some recommendations from staff, which we are free to accept or reject, but your point about wanting to see the RFP that was sent out, that's a fair one, and I'm sure Mr. Whoopsers would be happy to supply it to the commission. It's a public document, he wouldn't have any reason not to, so.
And I think what just starts with is, I shouldn't have to ask for it, and neither should the public. That's what's at issue here. The staff, us, we deciding you're not letting the public in on what we're doing on these kinds of projects until, until the very end with our decision. Our constituents may have an opinion about this, where it's at, and as I said, so, yes, I, I see what we're doing is perfectly legal. I'm not sure it's in our best interest.
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Twine.
There was a committee, there is a committee set up to review some parameters for the justice, and I am part of that committee. There are others from the city staff that's part of that committee. The RFP, I can understand Mr. Schwanger's position, and it appears like it's, it's done. It was mentioned in the city manager's report, not much discussion took place. However, it was a public announcement through the city manager's report. Everyone had opportunities to ask questions there as far as the commission is concerned. And again, the RFP was for parameters that was set forth. Judge O'Brien is part of that committee. He has certain parameters that he's looking for. Chief Orbeck, myself, and some others. So Commissioner Poole, I can understand that you feel like enough information was not put out there initially, but I think some of the key personnel and people that are going to be considering what the needs are as part of that committee, and we, all of us commissioners, have opportunities to ask questions.
I just have an update through the commission president to the commission. We believe the RFP was attached to the manager's report where it was mentioned in the notes, so you should have a copy. I don't know if that's a certainty, but we'll make sure. Some of the things that we can do is always include RFPs in the manager's report as attachments to those notes. It is on the city's website for sure, but I could also email those to you. It'd probably be more seamless, because we actually do a lot more of them than you realize. Justin's comment on the uniform one is a good example of, from time to time, whenever we're procuring things, we're going out for either bids or proposals. But if you have questions on anything beyond what's in there, and we can use our best judgment, I think Commissioner Poole's point is well taken on me making a presentation on a process to the commission, we'd be happy to try to do that for very large things, but we can also make sure they're in the manager's report and pull those back if anyone has questions, and the collective will of the body is to make that more of a legislative item than a motion, if that helps.
Chairman?
Mr. Poole?
Just for a moment, Ms. Twine, could you give me just some idea what the considerations are for this property? What it is that you folks, what you've decided you're looking for?
All that information is in the RFP, and I'm not going to.
It's in the RFP, okay.
I guess it's safe for you to come back to the microphone, ma'am.
Hello, my name is Marcy Platt. I was born in Providence Hospital, I'm 55 years old, and for the majority of my life I've lived in Sandusky, Ohio. I have a bachelor's science degree in environmental health from Bowling Green State University. I have a master's of social science administration with Case Western Reserve University. I've decided to become a social worker, and that's what I've been for the last 17 years. I'd be remiss if I did not advocate for the citizens of Sandusky. I'm not going to go on anything big and huge like where city, where the police department is located or whatever, but I agree very much with Mr. Lockhart. There is a huge miscommunication between what's going on in terms of the commission and the average citizen. I want to thank Mr. Brady and Ms. Twine, because they came to a coffee thing that I happened to go to for the very first time in my life, and felt very much like I was heard and thought to. And Mr. Brady had brought up, one of my questions was, why was the Sandusky police patrolling Cedar Point? The only part that didn't get answered about that is, when someone sues the city of Sandusky, because it was a city of Sandusky police officer who is going to be arresting them and doing whatever on Cedar Point property, they don't have a Cedar Point car, they don't have a Cedar Point uniform on. Who will they sue? Are we equipped legally to handle lawsuits that happen when our police officers are patrolling on private property?
Mr. Harris? I don't know, I think the answer is, all of our officers are insured.
Correct.
No matter where they are in the city, and no matter what they do.
So if somebody sues the city of Sandusky for something that happened at Cedar Point for 25 million, we're covered for that?
The same would be true if they were at McDonald's or anyplace else in the city.
Okay. Although it doesn't cost me anything to go to McDonald's parking lot, it doesn't, there is a question there. The other thing, when you come into this room, it's very intimidating, and I'm really not intimidated very easily at all, but you've got some heavy hitters in here, and I think that's one of the reasons why you don't get any audience. Another thing that I've heard through the grapevine is that when people have given suggestions and have said things, it hasn't been heard. The people do not feel it was heard. I'll give you an example. We all passed an income tax levy to go up. It's January 9th, my leaves are sitting in front of my yard. Now, the woman that came in a couple of weeks ago, because I was here and I listened to her concerns about the snow and the ice, when she left and she walked out of the parking lot, and I walked behind her, she turned, I said to her, what do you think? She says, excuses, 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 that's all I ever get out of the city commission. Now, that's what she said to me. Now, I don't want much from the city, but I do want safety, I do want my leaves and snow to be picked up, and that's what I thought issue eight was going to do. I've worked in a lot of different, I've worked in manufacturing as a quality engineer, I've worked in counseling agencies, I've worked at Cedar Point at one point in my life, and when you couldn't get it done from 8 to 5, you stayed until whatever it was till the job got done. And that's what I think the people of Sandusky, they don't want this huge neighborhood fund so somebody gets new shrubs, or somebody gets whatever. They want their leaves picked up, they don't want snow and ice all over everything. That's what they want. I didn't think much about ever coming and talking to anybody in the city until I received something saying that they were going to rezone the area behind my house back into an automotive thing. I said, okay, no problem. I called Angie Bington, she said, oh, don't worry, it's not going to go through. No big deal. Years ago, it was Twardzik's garage, automotive garage, okay? Thank God, okay. After the poor man died, it got rezoned back, and then the next thing I know, after I talked to Angie, Angie says it's a done deal, my neighbor calls me and says, there's a motorcycle garage behind your house. So there I am, tax-paying citizen, doing everything I am supposed to do, and a motorcycle garage goes behind my house to repair motorcycles, and Mr. Poole's commission is the one that did it, and I have no recourse. Is that looking at my best interests? There was no job procreation. This man had a place on Bartschard Road, and he moved it to Campbell Street, 1 to 1. And the name of it is FKN Performance, How's Your FKN Bike? And it's right behind the Nehemiah Center, the one that you want to put the playground equipment in. What did we miss here, guys? Huge. Now, my city commission is supposed to find out what I want to do about that, right? When I asked Mr. Mears, the president of that commission, I said, why didn't you ask the neighbors what was going on? Oh, well, he gave us a letter from a neighbor that said it was okay with him. One neighbor. I said, why didn't you take the time to ask people? Well, we don't have that kind of time. As a city, as a citizen of the city of Sandusky, I want my commissions to have time. I want them to have the energy and the effort to really know what they are doing. If you don't have the time to ask me, who lives in that backyard, about that motorcycle thing, then don't be on that commission. Because before you make a major change like that, and motorcycles are not automobiles. And so now I'm stuck. I am stuck. I didn't do anything. How many of you want a house right in front of a motorcycle garage, so they can rev up? Okay? The only other suggestion I have from what you said today is that I know that you don't want anything in front of the front yard till 6 o'clock at night. It's dark, guys. It gets dark at, what, 5 something? Couldn't we at least amend that to 4:30 or something, so that people who have to, people can go out in the light and put their garbage cans out in front, instead of waiting till 6 o'clock? I know there's a lot of people out there that are scared to death, that if they put it out an hour, an hour and a half early, the city is going to give them a $100 bill, that they're going to have to pay it. So my suggestion is, I don't know how you guys do it, but there is a disconnect with the public. They are afraid to come down here into this atmosphere and talk and be on TV and do whatever. I don't know what you can do to bridge that, but, you know, heck, I remember when it was first on cable TV in the 80s, and my grandfather would be down here saying stuff, and these seats would all be full. There'd be somebody coming down here and interacting and doing what they needed to do. And it's kind of a shame there's nobody here. And people say, yeah, well, they can watch it on TV, but watching on a TV doesn't give you guys any feedback as to what the people of Sandusky really want. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Platt, for coming down here. Anyone else present wishing to, well, I guess there is anybody else present wishes to address the commission, so unless you have a question, Andy, we will entertain a motion or adjournment. We stand adjourned.